Okay, we have a cannabis zoning discussion by city administrator Andy Kitchrow and Bryant Soper.
Can I give you one second more question? So as I'm pulling up something I'm gonna share on my screen, it's an overlay map, a map of Salisbury. I will let Laura and Bryant kind of do a high-level introduction on where we are, just kind of what's going on within cannabis legislation, what's being discussed in the county and the city. And then some of, and I can jump back in talking about some of our early thoughts that we want to have moving forward in this discussion.
Do you have a stopper?
Sure. So we now know roughly what the county is planning on doing with their cannabis zoning. I don't know if there's the ability to pull up the map that they have, or if that's included in what you're showing, Andy?
Uh, it is. It is our layer of maps for the city. I don't think it's got the county, but...
And so since we know where in their locations are going to be, the question is, where does the city want to allow the different types of growing dispensaries? And a lot of it comes down to the policy of where in the city everyone thinks this is the most appropriate.
So I think to part of what the county has been doing, so the county has, they're still working through the Planning Commission as part of their proposed textative through the office, the planning zoning office. Their current proposal puts the growing, processing, and dispensaries in industrial zones, which for us are pretty much fairly adjacent to everything around Millwood Mill, Northwood, the northwestern part of the city and surrounding area. From our perspective, I think staff agrees that the growing and processing is an industrial process. Our process, what we're working through is having those in our industrial zones, light industrial, industrial, industrial park. The main question really is about dispensaries, essentially the retail sale of cannabis. That's kind of what we're working through. We have state legislation that has a thousand-foot setback from additional dispensaries and licenses. Also, we have a 500-foot setback from items that are listed in the state law related to schools, primary and secondary, public parks, gyms, recreation areas. So these are things that we have to work through to define, and as in our code, and what I usually want to look at. And as soon as Andy gets it up, we have that 500-foot setback established. Kind of what it looks like when it's actually applied. I think the important impact is to understand that we're not exactly sure how many licenses we want to receive in this area. We currently have one that was a conversion of a medical license to a recreational medical license that businesses currently existing on Mount Herman Road. We're not exactly sure how many others we're going to receive. I think the important part with this process is that we do have two options available to us, whether it's an overlay zoning, so essentially establishing a separate zoning layer for cannabis over top of our current zoning map. We also have the option to allow special exceptions in certain districts and permitted use in certain districts. A special exception would require a trip to the border case. I think we're still working through this process related to how it looks on our map and where these are going to be located.
And the thought being that we can try and figure that out and get some of this displaced by the end of the year before the new licenses are started.
Those are in early 2024?
Yeah, January.
I can say one additional area where staff agrees that these dispensaries or uses would not be permitted in shopping centers. Staff feels that those shopping centers and grocery strip malls would have to be more repurposing. The old Kmart shopping center is a great example. There is a church and assumed to be a junior achievement center. I don't believe that a medical cannabis dispensary would be an appropriate use in that area. So it's important to note that when a medical cannabis, when a cannabis site is picked, it's not only, that establishes a 500-foot setback on other businesses surrounding it. So if a site were to be located for a cannabis dispensary, that establishes a 500-foot buffer around it, that a child care center, you know, a gym. You know, it does limit the businesses that are around it as we defined it.
So a little bit of technical difficulty with sharing the map because of some things that happened in previous meetings. We stopped sharing for, completed for the whole meeting, including I am locked out as well. So I can't share the screen, but I can share with you guys individually and show you some of the setback stuff and what we're talking about. But essentially, it's an overlay of all the areas that would be restricted. But from an administrative standpoint, talking with some people who are potentially business owners who are interested in bringing a dispensary into the area, being too restrictive with the zoning of the dispensaries, I think would be counterproductive to the economics that could come with having a dispensary in the area. I do think it is appropriate to properly have proper oversight over it and zone it appropriately so that we can control our own narrative with it. And that is one of the interesting ideas with these overlays, zones, rather than a purely general commercial or just restricted to industrial, light industrial. But one of the reasons we want to bring it to you all early on is as we start to draft potentially some legislation to bring towards you. It has to go before the Planning Commission. We wanted to just gather some feedback specifically about this idea of kind of like an overlay zone. And to get any questions that you may have specific to what setbacks are, what this space is. And we have people who are in that industry here too. We can talk more specifically to them if we invite them up.
And I just want to make sure of the numbers rate. So it's a thousand setback from other dispensaries, 500 from schools, public parks, gyms, recreation areas. I just want to make sure I have that rate.
That's right.
Are we still working with the county on what they're doing? Because I know prior to, we were speaking about seeing what the county was doing.
So the county has identified the zones that they think it's appropriate in. And so now, and theirs is limited to industrial zoning. And so I think the thought is that there are certain cannabis-related activities that probably are more industrial-related. The question would be whether or not we want to expand that through an overlay zone to a more commercial zone. And that would be specific to the same elements.
I may just email to you guys the file if you have the ability to.
I think staff is anticipating that most of the dispensaries are going to be within the city limits. Whereas potentially the growing and processing operations are going to be the ones that end up in the county.
Sounds about right. Okay.
So the green on the map is where we're talking about.
So you've got the map?
Yeah.
So the green is the areas that would be restricted so that you could not be in those areas. Essentially, they are surrounding schools or churches and stuff like that.
Okay, so those are the exclusion areas.
Yep, those are the exclusion areas. So if we were to do an overlay map, essentially, we would pick an area more likely in the general commercial area, in the area that we would want to encourage redevelopment, economic redevelopment. But then those areas in green would be essentially an area within that map that could not be. So this is high level. We can drill down and have a pretty colorful. And that would, is what we would need to present to Planning Commission, exactly what we would want to do, what we'd have to adopt would be the details. But again, a little bit higher level, introducing this idea of an overlay zone, gathering feedback.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. Thank you.
And that's not, we didn't just come up with this idea. Other communities have done this specifically within this field of cannabis in other states.
Yeah.
Andy, answer my questions. We're good?
Any more questions?
No, this is, we're gonna have a couple more discussions on this, right? So then I'm good. Honestly, I just kind of want to digest this map to look at everything. Yeah.
Bryant, next step to the process, just so, because this has to be approved and reviewed with Planning Commission. Initial take here, more conversations with Planning Commission, come back for a final.
So the next steps would definitely be a public hearing with the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the city council based on the ordinance. Depending on how the, you know, we're not so concerned about the growing and the producing because that is going to be pretty similar to what the county has established for disallowed use. What we're really focusing on is the sales and how that's going to work. So at that point, we'll probably be in the discussion before the Planning Commission to get their feedback and then a public hearing where they would make a recommendation. And then at that point, it would return to the council for the process of adopting the ordinance.
And because of the timeliness, January is coming fast. Some decisions have to happen. We'd like to get this moving pretty quickly within the Planning Commission. So beginning of the temperature check here, we would then start that process.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. No, I think this is a good direction. Honestly, I would like to see it move to that next stage so we can get some more feedback from the broader community, so.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
When would this be in front of the Planning Commission?
Hopefully, the next available Planning Commission filing will get timeline.
Not this one?
It's not this one.
That's what I was gonna say. That's why I was asking. I'm like, it's not gonna be this. It's not gonna be this. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Blink your eyes.
October, okay.
We would fast-track this internally.
I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
We would need to have this completely wrapped up before the end of the year.
Yeah, before you say it.
If I may, the process is November 7th, the phone applications come out. And so the reason that there's a bit of urgency with this is because this legislation came out, 88 pages of information back in early 2023. From then, there has been nothing new up until the very beginning of September. And now the application, which was supposed to come out in September, are now being pushed back to November with a two-month period before they open, and a one-month period before they make decisions. It'll happen in January. In order to fill out a proper business plan, a security plan, and a diversity plan, you really have to have some real estate picked out to be able to generate something that is of real substance to make your application plan strong. So if this happened two months ago, it would have been really helpful. At this point in time, we're already kind of coming down to the threshold.
So really, it is the sooner the better. Okay, all right.
The amount of licenses that are ready to release and a couple of cabinet, this stuff is coming out every day. So there's a lot of new information on a daily basis. But there will be two dispensary licenses that will be issued in the first round here in January. Then they're going to break down the licenses for growing and for processing into four different quadrants of northeast, southwest of the state of Maryland. And inside of that, you'll be able to apply. So whether those even come into the area or not, people that are setting up processing and growing licenses need to be in the cheapest land possible because they need extremely large facilities. They're not looking for retail spaces, right? If this is a retail business, and as we all know, the location is everything. I'm a business owner here in downtown Salisbury and I'm building this oyster house over here. Over the last summer with some of the construction issues we've had, I have experienced firsthand how important the location of things are. So I only mention this just because while you are considering where we put these things for the businesses to be successful, to put them tucked away in these small areas of industrial zoning would be a undue burden on the actual retail spaces themselves. I think we all agree they need to be classy. I think they need to have a certain appeal, a certain look to them, controlled by zoning. But I do want to just make you all think about the spaces that are available for industrial. When you look at that overlay, it looks like there's 2,316 acres of potential area that can be done. But a lot of those spaces are either owned or they are, would need to be completely renovated and built out and ground up, including sewer, water, electricity, all run in these spaces, which would be very expensive. And also, it puts them in place where they would not hit the 18-month mark, which is when you are given your conditional approval, you have to be on the run of 18 months. So I just want to put that in there. And you really need to storefront it. It's something you have to try to work on.
Thank you.
No, yeah, that context is great because we're obviously not industry experts ourselves. So it's always nice to get that feedback.
Okay. Well. Um, excuse me, sir. You can't speak.
Yeah, not. Sorry, Brian. No public comment.
Um, is everybody?
Yep.
Is everyone, anyone questions?
No, no, I think we're heading in a good direction.
Yeah, we are. Thank you. Okay, and next to you.
All right, bring up another legal team member, Heather Conyers. Bye. Laura can just hang out. So Heather, would you like to kind of take the lead or would you like to?
I'm happy to take the lead. So as part of a lot of the growth talks and the talks that you had earlier tonight, we've been looking at different internal processes and mechanisms throughout the city. And like the messages that we're sending, one of the things that we looked at recently that we thought merits some revision was our annexation fees, our annexation fees for someone to come into the city. Obviously, that's how we grow. That's how we increase our tax base. So it's been very important to the city of Salisbury, any municipality, actually. And reviewing those fees felt that they were, in essence, a bit cost prohibitive, that perhaps they were sending a message that we weren't sure we wanted to send, maybe that we would be more isolationist, that we're not encouraging the types of brokers, marketers that we want to encourage. So we took a look, we surveyed what other municipalities throughout the state were doing. We worked with the Maryland Municipal League to educate ourselves, and we did find that our fees are higher than most. And so just thought that what we would bring to council is a recommendation that the fees be brought in line with what other municipalities and similarly situated municipalities are charging so that we can perhaps get ourselves back on track. And then we think poised to move into more smart growth and comprehensive growth conversations that are in the pipeline and soon to happen. So is there anything you want to add to that, Andy?
No, the proposed fee schedule is in the memo, the reduction. Talking to Echo and Heather, we've had specific people who've come to us from developments who are interested in annexing to add it to our growth. And our current rates are barriers to entry. And again, so that kind of led us down this path, and I think we've landed in a place that I think is very comfortable moving forward. But we're definitely here to answer questions.
Okay, so for the proposed rate for an additional acre is only 500 bucks. Prior for an additional acre, it was 9,011. So is 500 bucks too, too long?
Well, that's my question is, do you maybe have the numbers? Is there a way we can get a look at comprehensively what we are incomparable to maybe municipalities of our size?
Sure, yeah, we've got that information. What we found out through the process was a lot of people have their, essentially that first acre is the bulk of it, and then the additional acre. And we did not have a drop-off, so 10-acre parcel. So this really.
There's no incentive for them to.
Right. Yeah, so it was those larger parcels or larger development projects that were, it was adversarial to.
Can I give you one example? So the city of Frederick, which was a civil rights entity, the city of Salisbury, they charged $4,400 for the first acre, and then $10 for every acre after.
Oh, wow. Fair. So we're still, we still have it a little bit high. Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, so the city of Cambridge, their application fee is $5,000, and that plus $4,000.
Okay.
So, and we can get you this in.
You just saying it, I have it written down. That's perfect. So thank you. That was just my big question is I wanted to be able to compare what, and, yeah, thank you.
Any further questions?
None.
You have consensus to move us forward?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. And next is boards and commissions for county reps. Then we have some boards that are available. Mirror Lepus County. I'm gonna take the planning and zoning. The town gown is available. SWMPO is available. The zoo commission is available. Let me see what else. Is that still in? And the zoo commission. So is anybody, town gown?
Is this typically how we go about the process? Could we just?
Yeah, just kind of see.
Town gown is in my district, so it'd be nice to be appointed to that.
Yeah, I was gonna say the zoo is.
The university, yeah.
And the zoo's in, in yours, so you want it?
Sure, I'll take it.
Okay. Okay, it was an easy fix.
Here's the last one.
And.
There was one, was there planning and zoning? I mean, I would do planning and zoning too. It doesn't matter.
I took that one, yeah.
You took that one, okay.
What is, what is WSMBPO?
SWMPO. It's a Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization. It was taking a year. So for example, that organization is the one who helped us put together the application to give the six points. How funding for the grant. So they help with all the recent transportation decisions.
Okay, does anyone want that?
I'm happy to.
Okay, so let me write it down now. We'll have it fixed. So planning and zoning is myself. And town gown is Megan. And so Wycomico Metropolitan.
Megan, you sure you want to take all of those? Because you've got, I'm looking and it looks like I'm short one. So if you want me to take one, that's fine too.
And you're taking the zoo too, right?
Yeah, I'll take the zoo.
So Megan, do you want to opt out on the?
On one of them.
On one of them?
That way we're kind of even Steven.
No, I honestly, with my work, I'm very flexible with my schedule. Super fine.
Okay, okay.
And what's going on with the tri-county council? Are we applying to have a position on that?
There's a number available at this time, so I don't know. Are we?
I, when we had checked.
Tri-county?
Tri-county is usually.
Tri-county?
Tri-county was mirror.
Was mirror?
But he was the one who was out of last January.
Right now, they don't, they don't need any more number.
Right, right. That's right. I knew it was coming up in September, September or October.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So that's me on planning and zoning. Town gown, Megan, SWMPO, Megan, and Drew Michelle.
Okay, yep, I'll take that.
Okay, so that is done. We have orders to approve grant funds through the Maryland Council Swift Grant, Deputy Chief Chris O'Gorsky.
I can move everyone?
No.
So through Title Health, once again, was successful in obtaining a grant through the rural Maryland Council of around $210,000. Through that grant, through our continued partnership via the Swift program, we are a sub grant fee of some of that money. So Title Health is giving us $85,012 to help fund Monday through Friday, our Swift program. So currently, right now, from the grant that we received last year, we can only sustain a couple days of this through this additional money that we're going to get this year. We can actually run the program Monday through Friday.
Any discussion?
I love approving grant money. It's always nice to, that's an easy ask for me.
Yes, it is. It's an easy fix.
Very easy.
We have no problem.
Right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna do, we'll do hundred comments. I'm asking that I have, well, I was told I had 10. But if I have 10, you're limited to two minutes. Two minutes. Give your name and. Okay.
Thank you for allowing us all this opportunity to speak. My husband and I, and Hope. Just to give you a little bit of education, we're covering us to describe the safe, sober, structured living environments for those in recovery from substance use disorder. This is the definition by SAMZA, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. This is exactly the framework has been provided in Salisbury since 2017. We free-recovery residences, and as I'll explain later, are all certified by the state, meaning that we comply with all state standards and requirements. By way of background, in 2011, NAR, the National Alliance for Recovery Residences, created a code of ethics and set standards for these programs. The standard applied to spectrum of recovery-oriented housing and services distinguishes four different types known as levels, or levels of support. The standard was developed through a strength-based and collaborative approach that solicited input from all major, regional, and national recovery house organizations. Guidance from the standard was also received from recovery house residence providers, some with decades of experience from across the nation, providing all four levels of support and nationally recognized recovery support stakeholders. In 2016, excuse me, the state of Maryland adopted the NAR standards when it developed a formal credentialing process for recovery homes through M-COR, the Maryland Certification of Recovery Residences, with oversight by the Maryland Behavioral Health Administration. Homes for Hope has worked closely with Wycomico, Worcester, Somerset County Health Departments, their local behavioral health authorities, the Wycomico County Hope Team, Wycomico County, Worcester County, Ruff Force, Wycomico goes purple, Worcester goes purple, and Wycomico and Worcester County School Healy Intervention Task Forces. That's just a name of few. We provide much-needed continuing care throughout the region, including working with avenues recovering community in Cambridge, Warwick, behavioral health, and East Market, Witsit Center, and Chestertown, Step Up and Grace in Salisbury, as well as other local recovery residences. Most recently, Homes for Hope and other, I'm sorry, has been consulting with and intends to partner with the city of Salisbury by donating our time, resources, and expertise to help provide oversight for the industry village. Homes for Hope communicated with Salisbury Housing and Community Development and/or the infrastructure and development regarding every recovery house location that we have opened. All our recovery houses are certified by the VHA, Behavioral Health Administration, designated credentialing entity, Maryland Certification of Recovery Residences, or M-COR. We complete onsite virtual inspections with then-herd documented adherence to their health and CACs.
Thank you. Thank you. Heather Johnson? You have her back in two minutes?
Good afternoon. My name is Senator Johnson. I'm the clinical director of Palmetto Corner, which is a residential substance abuse treatment facility in both Wycomico and Somerset Counties. Without places like Homes for Hope, we have nowhere to send our patients that are coming from the local community. We have two options. We can send them back into homelessness, or we can send them into an environment where they are treated with respect and kindness and learn how to live within the confines of society. If we take that away from our clientele, we will not lower recidivism rates. We will not lower relapse rates. We will not lower crime rates. Statistics prove recovery housing is necessary. Statistics prove that communities that allow recovery housing thrive. Our clientele thrives. Not only am I clinical director of a facility, I live in the city of Salisbury. I live in the neighborhood that is under fire right now. There is zero issue with recovery housing. We had criminal behavior before then. We will have criminal behavior after that. The only thing that these facilities are doing are helping people learn how to live a healthy life in a way that is superminded, in a way that is healthy, in a way that is conjunctive with probation and parole, with other facilities, with. with probation and parole, with other facilities, with the legal system. We can throw that away, but it's not gonna help. My recommendation and the official standpoint of Palmetto Corner is behind Homes for Hope and the allowance of recovery facilities. You follow that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, Steve Silverman? You have two minutes?
Thank you, council, thank you very much for seeing me, appreciated. Appreciate everything that you guys do, it's very important. You know, I understand what we do is important as well, I'm Steve Silverman, I'm the Director of Operations for Recovery One Eighty. We are located in Compton County, we also run three one one E C certified, um, and CAR certified facility. Recovery housing is a central part of the recovery process. I don't know if any of you have any family members that are in recovery and suffer from substance use disorder, but it is devastating to families and it is terrible and it is something that is, uh, that is an epidemic throughout entire recovery. Housing is a central part of the recovery process, according to the Maryland Department of Health's twenty 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 Chairman's Report, Report on Substance Use Disorder Treatment and Limitation Program, there's evidence that therapeutic community models may be superior particularly for social outcomes to other forms of residential treatment. Essentially, individuals in recovery have a greater chance, uh, in recovery housing have a greater chance of long-term sobriety when they enter a sober living environment after completing a detox program. I don't know if you guys are familiar, but people in these houses are not in detox. They are working to help their lives get better and improve them. They are not fighting drugs, they are not committing crimes, they are engaging in healthy behavior and if left their own devices without community support and a safe place to live, they can slip back into their old lives. So now more than ever, it is our responsibility as citizens and as your responsibility as representatives of the community to protect persons separate from SUV, allow them to continue their recovery journey, using the tools and the resources that are currently available. It is my sincere hope that you will see the merit of structured sober living facilities and allow us to commune our light saving work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Smullen? You have her back in two minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Debbie Smullen, I am president of Worcester's appropriately served Worcester Wycomico and Somerset Counties Association with the HAC. Uh, this is my first time at a Salisbury council meeting and I was impressed to hear that we care about from the heart, we care about sincerity, we care about inclusivity, we care about fairness to everyone. So with our homes and our Homes for Hope, we are supporting the recovery community. We talk about the heart. Anyone who knows me, my grandchildren are absolutely my heart. They both, I've had two grandchildren go to daycare on Middle Boulevard with Ms. Sharon. I would not hesitate for a moment to have a recovery house in that community. So I speak for myself, my children and my grandchildren. Recovery housing is safe, more monitored than any housing probably in the neighborhood. So I just appreciate your consideration and hope that we can continue our recovery mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Nikki Holland.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Nikki.
Um, so I go by Nikki, but my real name is Elaine. Um, I'm here today in hopes, um, to help rectify the most associated with addiction in recovery houses. The stigma surrounding the two must stop, as well as the tackle Homes for Hope as it affecting all recovery programs and housing resources for individuals in recovery in the Salisbury area. Recovery houses are a crucial asset to Wycomico counties, um, as they provide a safe structure and stable living environment for individuals who are working to rebuild and recenterize. Recovery housing should be a celebration, excuse me, because it provides a place for individuals who were released from inpatient treatment, um, who were once released from inpatient treatment back into the streets with the expectation that they were able to survive and maintain their recovery, their recovery homeless for a new same environment that they wanted to get out of. I know this firsthand because I'm on recovery, um, I also live in the middle Boulevard area. The stigma surrounding addiction makes it hard for us to be open about our past and a fear of continued shame and ridicule from the community. Um, for seven years I've been in the community and nobody does know that I'm a recovering addict. My mortgage company didn't make me open a ground check and I shouldn't have had posted signs in my yard, um, stating what I was. I've never had an issue with any of my neighbors, my home is very well maintained and in fact, it's one of the best in the town, um, on the block. There was crime in our neighborhood far before the recovery houses were purchased and I honestly mostly are related to the college students walking by and causing destruction of property, um, or other issues that aren't talked about, like the man that's breeding his dog and the dogs are attacking and killing other people's folks in the air, so. Um, those things are acceptable. Eleven years ago, I made the decision that I did not want to be a disappointment to my family, um, so I made the decision to go to treatment and then go for a recovery house because without one, I wouldn't be sitting before you today. Over the last eleven years, I've obtained not one, not two, but three college degrees, most recently completing my master's degree and passing my state boards for my professional license. Also, I hold a supervisory position at my place of employment. Employment, I say all this to say that recovery is possible, we do recover and we do want to become productive members of society.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Tasha Jameson? No? Okay. Um, Mindy Smith?
Hi, my name is Mindy Smith and I'm in recovery and recovery. I'm here to represent me and the people that are just like me. I am very much a product of the recovery house. Um, I have been in the recovery community since two thousand eighteen and a lot of my success depended on not only the drug work program, but as well as the house that I was living in. That was a great stepping stone for me to help build stability within my life and the whole accountability for myself. I know as well with recovery houses, not only with the one that I was in, but as well as the other ones, rules or regulations that those houses abide by. And that's just what you've been with in the house. Um, I was a house manager at one point before that house and I knew that that house needed to be run the way that it was expected to run. If there was any type of issues, you feel with the neighbors, it was for me to help address if the other could not be there and be present. And I think that is what's happening with the other recovery houses. And even what's happening within the communities, you know, it's just a matter of just having a conversation to be able to fix anything that needs to be fixed. Um, I'm aware of all the others that are in the houses and they will do anything for the community as well as the people within those houses. And those houses are important for people that are just like me and want to be successful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kelly McCullough?
Thank you guys, please. I'm here today as a person in long-term recovery to support the recovery community in these houses which help allow recovery to happen. I can't imagine that there are too many people in this room that addiction has not affected in one way or another. I happen to be, oh, I'm sorry, unfortunately, there are also some who believe that they can't, these people can't change. I happen to be one of those individuals who people believed would never change. Anyone who knew me back then, including myself, thought I would never, that I would be dead before I turned thirty, that I'd never make it out, yet here I am with thirteen years in recovery and have earned a couple degrees in the substance use field to give back in whatever way I can to help those still struggling. That would not have happened without my new beginning in a recovery house. The house was a start for me to learn how to live a better life. The bonds formed within these recovery houses with both housemates and staff will give individuals the strength and accountability needed to be successful. These houses are an invaluable resource that provide not only structure, but safety, support and guidance to people new in recovery. For those that are saying not in my backyard, addiction is already in your backyard. In your schools, it's in your churches, it's in your streets, it's in your stores. And these houses are a needed tool to fight that morbid addiction. We as a community are lucky enough to have these resources available to our siblings, aunts, uncles, parents, children and friends, but here we are having to defend what we should be celebrating in recovery. Recovery can happen, but only if we allow it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have two names here, I'm not for sure. One is Kevin Henry, is there? Okay.
How are you? Based on housing. I'm trying to get this. Bayside Housing LLC has a transit house program that seeks to assist long-term housing services to individuals who are in need of housing aid in their recovery. Process to assist individuals with re-entering back into the mainstream of society. Bayside Housing offers a restorative approach with centers on responsibility, healing, self-actualization, we develop and strengthen individuals to reveal confidence and self-esteem in housing, move beyond self-defeating behaviors. Bayside Housing LLC was established on February fifth, two thousand five by Kevin Henry and Kevin Henry because of their passion to serve individuals with core permanent health disorders, substance, substance abuse disorder, with supportive housing. This institution started with the collaboration of Boardman as well as Wycomico County Health Department. Essentially, Bayside Housing is a status partnership between state and local organization. Uh, it's, it's all, it's, uh, Maryland Department of Health, Maryland Department of Behavior and Health, Wycomico County Health Department and Wycomico County Drug Code. And I'm gonna cut this short because it's one of the reasons I also, I'm also here to be able to have a testimony from a young lady that lives in my house, who has done very, very well over the years.
So she can get her two minutes. She gets it. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is Lisa Smallwood and I'm a resident as well as assistant house manager at Bayside Housing. Um, before coming to Bayside Housing, my life was all over the place. Um, coming into Bayside Housing, having the independent structure model that we live by there, being able to become my own person and having a structure along the way has been tremendous in my recovery process. Um, I'm not only here speaking for myself, on behalf of everybody else that's here, but I'm speaking for the people that's out there yet to still find recovery. Have you ever heard of the saying, it takes a village to raise a child? It takes a village to allow somebody to recover. We can't do this alone and all we have is a means to allow us opportunity to be able to be productive members of society. And I'm here today to speak that I am now a productive member of society. I have judged by the look on my cover all the time and that is not the first time I have. So allow, I thank you for allowing me for your time and hopefully you continue your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Smallwood? Oh, you have to go again? No, no, no. Brandon Martinez?
Hi, I'm a new resident, not only to the recovery house in Trenton, but also to Salisbury. Um, since I had moved here, my life has been tremendously great than where I left it. Um, I'm from Frederick, Maryland, Haverstown, Maryland area and, um, I couldn't get myself together. I didn't have a very enough rooms. I went to Warwick because I wanted to change and to change my people places and things. They introduced me to Mr. Henry, um, he opened up his house to me. He's allowed me the comfortability that I can, me having to be for myself, I don't have anxiety like I used to. I am very comfortable and I would, it would be very heartbreaking if this house was to get closed out because Mr. Henry cares about our wellbeing and what happens not only in his house, but helping center ourselves in the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Brian Spicer. Now you need to change your shot.
Yeah, I forgot earlier. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Brian Spicer. Uh, for those that don't know me, I know you know me, but I've been a good neighbor.
Absolutely.
I am a total guy, you know. You would know. This stuff, it, these houses are, these, these places for the, the folks to, to get a second chance. Someone gave me a second chance. And I think we're going pretty good with it. I support everything and I received an email about this the other day and thought that I need to get in here. Um, it's a disease. I don't know if anyone knows this is a, is a disease. If you have cancer, it's a disease and you know it. If you have a heart disease, you know it. If you have an addiction, it's the only disease that I know of that tells you you do not have one. That, you don't, you, you know, you're right and everyone's wrong. These homes are needed and if, you know, those opposed to it in these communities, I would be, for lack of a percentage, I would be able to say a large percentage of the folks that are against this go out to dinner, have three or four drinks, two, three, whatever it is, they are stone cold felons. Stone cold felons for doing that. These people need help, they need housing, they, they're, they need the environment. And for anyone to, to be opposed to it, I mean, why would anyone wish ill will to someone? You know? It's, it's just not acceptable to me, um, something that I feel I need to latch on to and get involved with, but again, my family, addiction, all through it and, you know, I fell into it too. But I'm doing my best. People ask me all the time, you gonna drink, could use drugs? Then you won't, I have no idea. No idea, when my feet hit the ground today, I can do, out of bed, I can say I.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer, thank you.
Thank you. We need to thank you for your, for your testimony, thank you. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else?
Could I have a little comment? Mr.?
Yes.
I'll write my name on the list.
And if not, I can read one.
Two minutes.
All right, thank you. Um, I just wanted to come before you today to thank you all for taking on the six-point intersection. That intersection is really troubling for a number of reasons, one of which is the number of students that have to walk to school every day. But my partner was struck by a vehicle crossing nearby that intersection basically because a driver was speeding through it, um, and it's just dangerous. So I think, you know, as you all continue down that process, I really do encourage you to, um, keep things moving. I'm really excited to see progress on that front. My second question tonight was with regards to the positions, um, funded for the Parks Department. Um, it looks like we're taking them on a way to fill other roles, but we seem to be transitioning folks away from the department to fill other roles. But we seem to be transitioning folks areas and some of the other areas. So I encourage you to look at some of the industrial areas and some of the other areas. I encourage you to look at some of the industrial areas and some of the other areas in our city that aren't utilized and consider those for the, um, in the piece for actual realize and consider those for the, um, in the piece for actual bias and consider those for the, um, in the piece for actual growth and production. Consider this, um, in the piece for actual growth and production of the, um, in the piece for actual growth and production of the cannabis products. Um, in the piece for actual growth and production of the cannabis products. Cause I'm, in the piece for actual growth and production of the cannabis products. Cause I feel, in the piece for actual growth and production of the cannabis products. Cause I feel like there's a lot of warehouses that aren't in the industrial zone that actually could be brought back to life.
Could, could you give us your name before you walk away?
Oh, yeah, I'll write it in this.
Okay. Administration comments?
Yeah, um, just, uh, just two things, um, we have a book festival this weekend, um, per from the rain, stealing thunder. Just, uh, one comment on the last piece, um, I know I went back and looked at the ordinance, it can be confusing um, just because it's within the org. We are taking, it's the same position, doing essentially the same responsibilities. It's actually our general parking maintenance person who worked downtown, it's just a new title, but it does seem confusing like that we're taking that out of our Parks and Recreation Division. So it's, uh, it's more of, uh, just how it's organized in the org chart, but same position, different title.
Andy stole my thunder again, but that's okay.
So I stole your thunder.
This, this week, we are going to have the, the first inaugural Maryland Folk Festival. Uh, and we invite everyone to come out, have a good time, um, say a couple prayers for the weather. And, uh, the last thing is, obviously, as always, if you can donate blood, please do so. We have a tremendous need, uh, right now. Thank you.
Okay, Megan?
Are we starting off with me?
Yeah.
Lovely. Um, so just echoing any statements that are in the Folk Festival, we have a number of volunteer opportunities available. It's a fun time, I used to do it when it was the National Folk Festival, so if any of you all have a free, you know, hour or two to give this weekend, strongly encourage, if not, just come down and enjoy the music, it is genuinely a really good time. Um, I wanted to just remind everyone from last week that we do have an event tomorrow. Uh, I encourage. Uh, I encourage any of the Middle Boulevard residents that are here today to come out as it'll be in the backyard of your community. So, uh, uh, tomorrow from six to seven at the Newt Community Center, we will be having our patio chats conversation. It's really just meant to be an opportunity for the community to get together, walk through some of the concerns and issues that we're seeing and really just extend the conversations that you all have here today beyond council. We're really trying to find other avenues for you to engage with us outside of council meetings. So this is just one way that we're trying to work on that. So, um, it'll also be a great time to be food and drink. So if anyone's here from the Newt or Camden or Middle Boulevard community, please come out, we'd love to have you.
Okay, would you like?
You can have cupcakes.
I can bring cupcakes.
Thank you so much for everybody who came out and I really just want to praise everybody who's recovering and in that process. It's amazing and thank you so much for being brave to share that. That is just, really was very heartwarming and, and, um, and having said all of that, I do want to reiterate about donating blood. Um, our area is very low with blood donations, it's very critical. One point of blood can save three lives. Um, the other thing I want to start mentioning is stuff about placicular disorders, it's a balance disorder. And, um, our pop, our population has a, a growing population of fifty-five plus and that's typically where you will start seeing, um, balance disorders. I'll be talking more about that and things you can do, uh, to improve your balance. And, um, I guess that's about it. That's it.
Michelle?
Um, I just want to thank everybody who came out to give comments. Um, it's incredibly brave to stand up and, and tell the public that you're in recovery and, you know, to, to put a face to the issue. And that's incredibly important, um, in advocacy and I, I know how hard that is. So I really want to just extend, you know, my, my admiration for that and I greatly appreciate it. I just want to extend my condolences once again to Mayor Todd Knockdown Pokemoke who lost his aunt recently. I attended the funeral on Saturday. The turnout was huge. Uh, she was obviously very well loved in the community. Um, and, and to all of the Jones family, I'm, I'm so very sorry for your loss. I, I, I know, um, she was, Todd's aunt was a very lovely lady and, and I liked her a lot. Um, and we'll all miss her. Um, I'm going to go ahead and check Maryland Folk Festival off my list since everybody else has already talked about that. Um, I wanted to thank the city for having the event with the potential, um, police chiefs this past week. Um, I just wish there had been more notice about it. Um, I found out with fifty minutes to spare and that was only because council member out and called me because I had been out grocery shopping all afternoon. The email didn't come until before that and I hadn't checked social media that day. So, um, I, I would like to raise the possibility of us possibly finding a member of staff or, or, or hiring somebody part-time to handle being a liaison for the council to the administration to keep those lines of communication open. I think that's something that we, we really need to start talking about, um, because the communication, things fall through the cracks like that. And something as important as that, I don't think should fall through the cracks. Um, so yeah, that, that was something I wanted to address. Um, also, and I just, this was something that maybe hopefully our, our new art council can look into, but we have this new beautiful Unity Square being built. And I don't know if anybody else noticed it third Friday, but the beautiful poster of Bull was no longer in its frame downtown. And I think it's high time we do something to make a permanent memorial of sorts for him beyond just renaming the Boulevard Main Street. Um, I, I, you know, that was kind of a mainstay of downtown and I know a lot of people were upset about it, um, including myself. I was, I was kind of shocked to see it being replaced by a political sign. Um, so I would like to see us possibly, that might be one of the first projects this new art committee could talk about. Um, and put something like that in Unity Square because he, he, he was part of downtown. And I think that would be an ideal place to put something there. So other than that, um, looking forward to the Folk Festival. Sorry.
Are you finished?
Yep. Go ahead.
I might like to thank all of the, um, public comments that came in. I mean, I, I can sympathize with you because I've been in your shoes, believe it or not, been right there. So I know about sobriety, I know about being clean, staying clean twenty, twenty-seven years. And look where I am today. I really don't need an applause. I just need everyone who is going through the sobriety and the, um, healing from addiction to stay on that straighten-out path. I appreciate you because your testimonies, see, to me, they're testimonies. They're just not up talking, those are testimonies and people need to hear those things. They need to know that and that, so they can know that people do change. And even in our addiction, we weren't terrible people, we were just addicts. So I just thank you for coming forward and continue your journey, continue your journey, um, doing whatever it takes to do what you do. Um, I appreciate you all, everyone who has spoke, even right down to, um, Monica and James. We need to know, and I'll say this every time when people speak, you need to be listening. Transparency goes a long way. And I too was Michelle, um, for the, um, meeting agreed with the three police chiefs. Um, Megan also contacted me, I had just gotten home from work and I did not know, and I'm trying to jump in the shower and getting ready, and I think that we should have a little bit better communication when it comes to things like that, even with the community. Because I feel as though the community should have been there to interact more than those who were there. I mean, it was to me, it was humiliating because we had three, well, actually four chiefs that are applying for these jobs. And you would think Salt Lake only had a population of twenty-nine. Seriously, so, you know, it was a poor turnout and I just didn't like it. I sat back and observed, but we all, we had great conversations with the gentlemen who were applying for chief. Um, great conversations, um, great interaction, but I just thought some more should have been there. I mean, I, I know, I could imagine how the chiefs that were applying for it felt because it wasn't like it, I would have thought it should have been. But I'll congratulate each and every one of those, um, chiefs that were there, that, that time applying for the chief position. Congratulate you one way or the other, win, lose, or draw, you're still a winner to us. Um, and I'd like to thank our council for just being great. We're all women. The world could not survive without us. Um, and I just thank you for coming. And right now we're going to the meeting, work session is adjourned. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Salisbury City Council. Can I get a motion to adopt the legislative agenda?
Second.
Out of Michelle. Angela? Megan, got you. Got, no, Megan. Um, call for the vote? Call, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Oh my God.
And the chair votes aye? One, zero. Oh no.
All right.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-eight for the first reading.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-eight in ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract titled "Help" "for the purpose of accepting sub-grant funds in the amount of eighty-five thousand twelve dollars." Whereas Title "Help" in conjunction with the city of Salisbury applied for funds to the World Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund, R and E I F. And whereas Title "Help" has awarded R and P I F funds in the amount of two-hundred-nine-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-five dollars. And whereas Title "Help" is sub-granting eighty-five thousand twelve dollars of the R and P I F funds from the city of Salisbury. And whereas all accepted R and P I F funds shall be used to operate the Salisbury Lycomingco First State Team and District. And whereas Section 7 dash twenty-nine of the Salisbury Street Charter, which is a treaty for integrated contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas the budget and estimate provided here and thus be made upon recognition of the mayor and the deeper of the course of the council of the city. Section one, ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-eight reads as follows. The city of Salisbury's fiscal year twenty-twenty-four general fund budget being revised amended as follows. A, increase the World Maryland Council revenue account, account one, zero, five, zero, zero, dash, four, two, four, five, four, zero, dash, X, 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 by eighty-five thousand twelve dollars. B, increase salary overtime not careful expense account, one, zero, five, zero, zero, dash, five, zero, one, zero, two, one, dash, X, 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 by forty-six thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. And C, increase various expense account, hey, sorry, increase various benefits expense account, one, zero, five, zero, zero, five, zero, two, X, 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 dash, X, 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 by thirty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars.
All right.
Oh, we didn't.
We did, didn't we? Yeah.
When everyone was filing, it could have been.
Yeah, it was Andrew, it was Andrew and Megan. We had, we had the vote. Yeah, it was Andrew and Megan.
If you need to hear it for like a mic.
Yeah, now we call for the vote.
Yeah, we can redo it if you need it for the mic.
No, I know. Do you need it?
I'm sure.
Mike probably picked it up. Um, all in favor of ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-eight? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the vote is one, zero. This last meeting is now adjourned.